Mr. Cappers?
I'm here.
Mayor?
President?
Mrs. Mahan?
Here.
Mr. Forrest? Mr. McGary?
Here.
Mrs. Johnson? Mr. Titterington?
Here.
Five were present.
Okay, the minutes of our last meeting, February 25th, have been disseminated to all the members. Are there any additions, corrections, or deletions to those minutes?
Move to be approved?
Mr. Forrest? There's a motion, a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? They stand adopted. First matter before the commission is the historic disreview of 125 South Market Street. Does staff have a report?
We do. The applicant, the question of due approval from point of commission was probably the wall sign at the location of 125 South Market currently is Mosley Stow Shop. Commissioner Mosley was not able to be here today, but Representative of Sign Company is here if we have questions. Basically, the colors for this sign are computer generated. They're going to be red, gray, white, and black on a black background. Riggering has been provided in your report. Those will be the colors that it will be. Staff does recommend approval based on the fact that it's appropriate scale of the building. It's a perfect design architecture style and interior to the building with its associated colors select, selected from the sign are compatible, and it's located as true as a minimalized aesthetic to the historic condition.
I like him.
Any questions of staff? Does the commission want to take action on the matter?
I assume the owner, Wade Westfall, is certainly in agreement on this.
There is a letter in the packet that from Wade.
Move for approval? Swing motion? In a second. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Here.
Mr. McGary?
Yes.
Mr. Titterington?
Yes.
Mr. Cappers?
Yes.
Next matter is the historic disreview of 11 North Market Street. Does staff have a report?
We do. This is for the location of a wreck, Janet Lark. The applicant was not able to be here today due to the fact that she is handling all the kids after school. It's proposing to put a temporary banner, as you can see in your packet. The colors also are computer generated, will be depicted as shown. This is a similar banner to what they've hunted past. It's going to be 20 square feet, which is below the maximum allowed for a temporary banner. And the number of days also that it's going to be erected is within code, and staff does recommend approval for all these same reasons of the last report.
Any questions of staff? Do you monitor the dates of use of the temporary banner?
We do. It's listed on the permit.
Any other questions of staff? Does the commission want to take action on the matter?
Motion, sir.
Second.
There's a motion, support for the motion. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. McGary?
Yes.
Mr. Titterington?
Yes.
Mr. Cappers?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Approved unanimously.
Next matter before the commission is a resoning request. This was tabled at the last meeting. First matter to come before us on this matter is to whether or not to remove it from the table for consideration. Is there any desire to do so by the commission?
I'll make that motion for the purposes of discussion.
There's a motion removed from the table. Is there support for the motion?
Second.
The motion is set. Please call the roll.
Mr. McGary?
Yes.
Mr. Titterington?
Yes.
Mr. Cappers?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Okay, the item is removed from the table.
Okay, now, now that we have the ability to go ahead and discuss the matter, does staff have a report?
Yes, we do, thank you. I know not everyone was here last week, so I put together just a couple of slides, nothing into it, just to kind of go over the project itself. Essentially, where the star is, that's the planned development. You can see Town Park Drive encompassing there. It's just north of Comfort Suites. You can see the other things around it. I-75 courses on your right to the east of that property. This is located in the tax increment finance district, the TIF. Essentially, the TIF, just so everybody knows, it lost the property value down at the current rate, and then what it does is it takes the improved value, puts it in a different fund, and then that fund is used to pay off the bonds that were taken out to support the infrastructure that was put in when this was created in 2003. So this is essentially the site plan, the general plan that they're wanting to use. It's one building. It measures 185,875 square feet. As you can see, it has four wings, and it has two areas for future developments should those occur. Essentially, the PD, the use is essentially one use. It's a senior living facility. That's actually stated in their application as Exhibit A and Exhibit C of the application. The units are, it's composed of three different types, which is independent living, mental care, and assisted living. Independent living consists of 92 total units. Mental care is 30, and assisted living is 36 units. The exterior appearance, they've provided three different options, and please correct me if I'm wrong, the applicant is here today, are you, under the premise that point of commission could choose the best of those three, or which one are you proposing? Yeah, yes, please.
If you don't mind giving your name and investments?
Hi, it's Mark Murphy. I'm from Triple M Investments. I'm out of Los Angeles, California. We are working on internally, I wanted to give you all the direction that we're basically going with the look of it. I imagine it's most likely going to be the top one that we're doing as our prototype with the vinyl siding, most likely instead of being vertical, it'll be horizontal, but that's the general look and feel of what we're doing, and that will be on all sides of the building. We will have, you know, siding, vinyl siding, and some sort of accent, stone, brick. One of the things we're just working on is just, you know, given the price points, we're making sure from a construction cost that, you know, we're staying within our budget.
Thank you.
We did drive through the area to take a look at the existing buildings that were out there. There's a kind of a mix of vinyl and stone, and vinyl and brick, so it would fit in with what's existing out there. I'm going to have to go back two slides, sorry. Essentially, the PD, there's 175 parking spaces throughout the planned development, which exceeds the zoning code requirements. All this is a PD, just to give a point of reference, it would exceed that. There's three points of access on the Town Park Drive. You can see the gravel walk to the top or the gravel lane. That will be removed once the development is in place, so that will be gone. So it'll just be those three sidewalks. There are sidewalks around the development. It goes around the circumference of the building, kind of follows the parking lot, and then there also is existing brick sidewalk that connects the development to Experiment Farm Road and Walmart, and I should have a map here. This is from Google Earth. The picture is from June 13th of last year. You can see the brick goes all the way to basically the Walmart property and connects all the way out to Experiment Farm Road, so there is good connectivity out there to the existing development. The PD also, I guess I'll have to go back, sorry. Might be a faster way to do this, I just don't know what it is.
Page up, page down?
I don't have the keyboard. So the development will be served by utilities. It's city and water, city water and sewer. There is a regional detention basin to the north, open space. It provides the 10% of open space for the development. There's an interior courtyard out there, and then the rest of the development is open, so they do meet the open space requirement. The conference of plan essentially indicates the proposed area to be developed as commercial use according to future land use map. The TIF also has use requirements, and it is to be a combination of commercial and service uses, and that's directly out of the ordinance. The proposed development is in compliance with the TIF and the comp plan because it is a service use. Staff does have, there are some concerns that we have. One is traffic, I'll just go through real fast. Traffic, this was provided by Choice One Engineering, and Jeff Puddell is here to further enlighten us on this issue. They essentially estimate 31 trip ends in the morning hours, 33 in the evening hours. According to the universal traffic information that's adopted by the state of Ohio, ODOT uses it, requires a traffic impact study at 100 trips for the peak hour. There were assumptions made, this was all in your packet, by the way, the assumptions made were 50% of the trips would go onto West Main Street through the development of Walmart, the other 50%, or 17, would use Town Park Drive. Now, there is some concern whether we want to encourage the development or the traffic to go actually out to Town Park Drive or utilize the Walmart, so if a traffic study is something that we're suggesting or going to suggest, we may want to make that point to the applicant. Just to give you an idea of what's currently out there, there's 3,000 vehicles use West Main Street intersection there during the evening peak hours, so just to kind of give you an idea, and I would open it up for discussion.
Mr. Chair, as far as ODOT, ODOT does not have any control over this property at all, do they?
No, they don't.
Okay. So that's just a general rule that they use, ODOT uses, on the state highways?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay. And the year or date when the 3,000 car count was made?
Jeff, you know, the information was actually submitted from Choice One Engineering.
Do you mind if I can?
Oh, please.
Jeff Puddell, Choice One Engineering, City of Ohio. The 3,000 vehicle count was the last recorded traffic count that ODOT, because it's State Route 41, ODOT still occasionally does the traffic counts, so I believe it was within a past year or so.
Thank you. Tim, tell me, the Troy Town coming up through the Walmart in front of Staples and all sorts of stuff?
Yes.
Is that a public thoroughfare? Has that been dedicated to the city, or is that private roadway?
That is a private thoroughfare.
How far back?
It's essentially, the public starts essentially where the hotel and outback are.
Okay.
That's where the public starts, so our responsibility as a city is from that to the north.
Whoever owns the private portion is probably going to want to keep the traffic restricted to go out the other way, then.
Most likely. There's actually a lot of different property owners out there. The way it's set up is there's multiple owners that own to the middle of the actual lines.
And that end of the road is dangerous. You're trying to hear that end of road goes back.
We do have some information on traffic. We asked the police department to provide some information on crashes. They went back to May of '13, and close to the intersection, there were 39 crashes reported, and 10 of those crashes were within 250 feet of skyline.
Now, that was an additional 10 crashes that were within 250 feet. Those are two different lists.
Apparently, there's 10 extra additional crashes.
Okay, got you. Okay, answer me this, Tim. They're asking for rezoning from B2 General Business District to a PD. What they're proposing, can it not be placed in a B2 district, or what would?
The reason for the planned development is because of the use. It is not a permitted use in the B2.
What would it be a permitted use in if they just want to go straight rezoning?
They could go to an OC1 or an OR1, but not the B2. The reason we opted to do that was because if we did rezone it, suppose they pulled out, then we'd be stuck with a limited use of commercial, which may not benefit the TIF such as the senior living facility would.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Any other questions of staff?
The applicant's here. Any other questions of the applicant?
I don't have any questions. I do have some comments. Are you done?
I just had one more point of concern was just to open up a discussion of the covenants restrictions, but we can do that after, if you're completed with the traffic information.
Yeah, I guess we defer to the chair on the covenants and restrictions since you are the resident expert there. My, besides that, and that concern, making sure that those are comprehensive and protective of the city and the rest of the TIF area, my main concern has been and continues to be the lack of any kind of understanding of what the traffic is going to do out there, additional traffic, be it substantial numbers or insubstantial. The concern is, is that whether it's private or public roadway, it is what it is. It is configured as it is. It does already create challenges particularly for vehicles that want to, that try to come out of the dead end where Bob Evans and Applebee's and some of the other shopping areas are, restaurant areas are, where they have a stop sign, but it is a continuous curve and is unabated. I don't want to make a bad situation or a less than ideal situation even less ideal. I'm concerned with the level of accidents that we've had. I have witnessed time and again how confused people are thinking that there is a three-way stop sign when in fact it is only a one-way stop sign. I'm not surprised, I am surprised that it's only 10 accidents there and not more, and I, you know, the only way that we, that I'm going to feel comfortable is to understand in an engineered, controlled way, a determination of what actually the impact would or would not be out there. As part of that traffic impact study, I would like to see, and what should be apparent from the results and the recommendations from that study, is whether we need to encourage that traffic to go out to Experiment Farm or back out to Main Street. I think that's a conclusion that can be reached by a traffic impact study. You know, the 3,000 count is a surprising number. I think, I thought that was low. It seemed kind of low, particularly at a peak period. I don't think that they took the counts on a Saturday evening when everybody is going to dinner, but nonetheless, I think for us to have an accurate assessment of what this development would do to that area, I think there has to be new traffic counts. I think the speeds have to be measured, and all that has to be taken into account in coming up with a conclusion as to what kind of, what the impact would be. I'm not against this. I think this is a very positive development. It's something that we do need in Troy. I think it can be a very positive improvement to the TIF and to the community. I just want to, I just want to know that traffic can be managed or not be made any worse by adding this facility and this development.
Thank you, Mr. Titterington. Any other comments from commission members?
I'll just mention that I'm very concerned with the comment that was made a month ago as to the fact that we didn't want to delay the project. We're not here to delay the project. I personally like the project. I think that it's going to be a good one for the city. I think you may stand to make some money at it. We're not standing in the way of the project, but a month ago, we asked for a traffic study, and we also asked for restrictions and covenants. The restrictions and covenants that we received were the restrictions and covenants that, hey, it might be like this maybe type of thing. If we take a look at these restrictions and covenants, we're passing them on to city council and asking them to adopt these as legislation. We want final product. We don't want any, hey, it might be like this stuff. So, you know, and we kind of said that a month ago, and it's like, we're not delaying this thing. You guys need to do your homework and get it back to us. Anybody else have any comments?
As I said last month, you know, I think this project has great promise, and I've heard that by, I think about everybody feels that way. Couple of things, I was concerned with the traffic, especially on that back end where lots of accidents could, and I'm surprised they haven't had more. You referred to it, Patrick's referred to it, and I certainly have been out there and been a part of that. So this traffic study will allow us to then look at what are the options to get people safely in, safely out, and make this a really good project. That's number one, and of course, I mentioned about the covenants, and as I looked through it, I said to myself, I need to talk to somebody that's a legal guy on that because I don't, you know, I just am not a legal attorney, and that was pretty above me, to be honest with you. But I do see a lot of promise in this project. I don't know how much it costs to do a traffic study to meet our needs that will allow us to use that, to see what we could expect out there, and of course, we'd like to see other properties be, or other things happen in along Town Park Drive as well, and that in itself is going to probably require us to look at traffic studies again. But this is a big, this is a big project, one that I see great promise for our community, but I do see some potential issues that I think I want to feel comfortable before we pass it on to council.
I can tell you what the applicant, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, tried to do was give the sales agreement to the TIF, incorporate that in the covenants, and then put seven extra restrictions on top of that. It's kind of what they tried to do to mesh that in. So when you read your packet, that's essentially what those two pieces of information are.
Yeah. Any other comments from commission members? Okay, I'm going to use this as a discussion point. Okay, so if you guys got anything you want to further discuss, go right ahead.
I'll let Mark address the covenants, Mr. Cappers. Just a couple of things on, that I'd like to talk about, obviously, our expertise on the traffic. A facility like this creates very little traffic compared to retail or commercial that would be out there. 33 and 38 trips per day, very minimal. For instance, if there was Home Depot or Target or whatever, probably talking about 2,000 or 3,000 peak hour trips, very significant. We weren't trying to get out of a traffic study per se, because number one, that's what we do, so we love to do it for Mr. Murphy. We were just trying to, obviously, expedite time, which we discussed, and also just trying to understand, to spend that kind of money for such a small amount of traffic. I'm not sure what the city would get from that. Obviously, there's an issue there at what I'm going to say the Walmart Steak and Shave Skyline area, and I use that intersection often also, and it's definitely problematic. Obviously, and Mr. Murphy can dive into this farther, we could ask our employees and as such to use Experiment Farm if that helps that particular situation. I guess my point was, it's such a small amount of traffic added, I'm not sure anyone would see the difference, especially if we could get the employees to use Experiment Farm Road.
Jeff, if this were not a unique piece of property, I would probably tend to forego a traffic study, or recommend that we forego a traffic study based upon your representation that there would be maybe 33 trips, but going out through that Walmart and the reluctance of people to use Experiment Farm Road as opposed to coming into Walmart, going that corner, I think warrants a traffic study, and that's why it was recommended.
So just to put my head around it and to help Mr. Murphy understand, is it a traffic study of that particular area? Is it a traffic impact study of the whole Troy Town area, Experiment Farm, as well as the Walmart intersection for?
Mr. Titterington, yours?
Well, I think it's, I don't think it's unreasonable to look at from Main Street up to Experiment Farm. You know, the traffic is more concentrated, of course, in the Walmart area, but certainly an understanding of both ends of it may allow a particular conclusion or a recommendation, and, you know, we may be surprised, you may be surprised that those 33 trips, if they all went up to Experiment Farm, they may have a completely different input-output at that intersection than there's, than would happen there now, than happens now, I should say. I mean, there is a development there. There's a retail strip there. Seems fairly quiet. It doesn't seem like there's a lot of traffic there, but understanding what's there now, the fact that this development is kind of in between both terminuses, term and I, you know, I think it's important to look at both areas and what the impact potentially could be. It may come to nothing, all right, but I, yeah, I think we have to do our due diligence and find out what that impact is, because if it is two, three, four times worse than what anybody expected, then we're going to have some pretty high-rate customers, property owners, retailers, nobody's going to be happy.
Is there anything keeping property owners from closing that off even, if it's private property?
Yes, because it links to public property, and it's part of the TIF agreement, and that TIF agreement has bond requirements. That's all part of it, yeah.
Okay, Mr. Murphy, do you want to say something?
Yeah, I guess what I'm, I've been involved in developing, I think we talked a little about this, a site of this size and magnitude, and remember going through the traffic impact studies, which I fully understand and appreciate. I guess what I'm struggling with is a couple of things. One is, you've got a comprehensive plan that was put into place that included a business commercial use on this site, and you've got basically two forms of egress that are in place today that contemplated this whole overall development. We're coming in with a use that is far beneath any retail commercial use in terms of traffic. We're coming in under the hundred that the state of Ohio, I think you referenced, trips would require a traffic study, I don't remember the exact terminology. So I'm going a step ahead in saying, well, if this was contemplated for business, we're bringing in a use that we know, based on our traffic study that we did, and, you know, you asked, you said you requested one, we did submit one based on our project in Ann Arbor, and then interpreted it as it pertains to this area, so we didn't, not hear what you said. I just wanted to make reference to that. So, and it's the same prototype, so it's verbatim. I'm just, I'm at a loss for, okay, I think we're doing everything we should have to do based on the project that's in place, and to look at this and say, well, what, okay, so now we're just spending money and time to go to what, to what end that, as it pertains to this overall development and to our minimal traffic that we're creating on this project? I probably, and I understand where you may have a traffic problem at ends that have nothing to do with us, but it feels like the burden is now following on us for someone that has the least amount of traffic and the similar amount of payroll that you would see for a commercial use.
Okay, thank you.
And that, so then the other, sorry, the second is the covenants and restrictions. This site is governed by covenants and restrictions that are on the property now, and so we did spend time with staff going through and figuring out a way that we wouldn't rewrite an entire covenants and restrictions for an entire development, given you have multiple owners, and looked at, I think there's seven things, give or take, that we felt needed to be amended, and again, working with staff, that directly deal with this particular site. So what we presented to you are those items that were of concern to the city staff that would be a simple, clean way to do an amendment to something that we already have to abide by once we acquire the property.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just, speaking for myself on the covenants and restrictions, what concerns me is the covenants and restrictions in the property as written or between you as a developer, you as a buyer, I guess, and the original developer. The city's not even part of those covenants and restrictions. So anything that exists between the developer and the courthouse is a totally different document than we need to see in front of us. We need to see where it says, okay, if it change, any changes in these covenants, they don't need to, they don't need the developer's approval, they need the city's approval.
I guess, then, what?
It's a different, it's a totally different.
I understand with?
And that document, whether you had a PD or not, would still be in place. And if you came under our zoning restrictions, the zoning would be the ruling authority. In this case, the PD is going to be the ruling authority. It has to be stated as such.
So I guess looking a step further on that as well, what is the concern? If we put those in place, I hear what you're saying, that the contract is between the development and us as the landowner, but given that we're part of, we'd be part of a PD, any change of use, we would be coming back through if we, to, that's your protection, that's your checks and balances. We're not going to build what we're saying we're going to build. If we're not going to build what we're saying we're going to build or try to amend that use, we would be back in front of you.
Well, what we approve has to say that.
Right, absolutely, but that's, there's no, I've never heard of, independent of putting covenants and restrictions on a property, that, we're here for that reason. We can't do anything without your approval.
Correct, because if we approve, if we approve it as such, allowing you to go to the owner or the original developer to get his approval, make a change, we're taking out of the, we're taking totally out of the loop.
But you still have a checks and balance of what we're presenting has to be built into code to specification. And if we wanted to do something different, even if we did some negotiated different covenants with the landowner, if we'd still have to come back to you if we wanted to make it some other use.
Mr. Davis?
Question, in Exhibit A, it talks about protective covenants and restrictions. What if, just so I know, and Mr. Murphy and I are on the same page, when we get together, so we come back before the planning commission, if they went with something as simple as something very similar to that, what that was intended, at least we thought, what it would do is, A, we put a kind of a catch-all phrase at number seven, which talked about the user track, which would be the owner agrees to develop the site compliant with all applicable building, engineering, and zoning standards unless it's provisionally waived within the PD. So what that told us was it would be all of our requirements unless we specifically put in there, he doesn't have to do that. And the only things we put in there exception-wise was parking, which he actually exceeds our requirements anyway. So if he did something as simple as maybe Exhibit A, is that what you guys are kind of looking for? Because it does talk about use, if he changes his use substantially, it must go back and forth, City Council?
The other PDs that come before us, the Stouders Center, that development off of Experiment Farm Road.
The GEM subdivision?
Yeah.
You want it very similarly laid out, just like this?
Yeah, they came back to us with written text or materials as to what the declaration and covenants would be. Okay.
Just want to make sure when we come back.
That's what I would be looking for.
Yeah, actually on the PD document.
Yeah.
Then that way, there's no confusion by anybody's part, whether it be a month from now or 12, 12 years from now, exactly what.
And there's other things within those PD documents, if I recall correctly. Now, I don't remember what I had for supper, that's not much less what we did back then. But if I recall, the GEM area, we talked about screenage of utility garbage bins and garbage placements and all that sort of stuff. Signage was in there. I think that we're looking at the whole ball of wax.
And just so you, I mean, this is, I can provide you a copy of this when you leave. It seems like if we take this information that you provided here, we kind of put it into this form of document, I think that's similar, addressing, addressing the similar concerns is what they're looking for.
The GEM document was actually textual material, similar to what you see in Exhibit A, the restated declarations and covenants and restrictions. And that document that you're showing us there, I think was an attachment to that declaration. So he would want to take a look at the actual declaration that was presented to us and became part of the ordinance.
Okay.
Okay, any further discussion items on this matter?
Yeah, just to go back to Mr. Murphy's rationale against a traffic impact study, while I understand that the TIF was approved with various uses in mind and to this point, the potential concerns or questions related to traffic exist because of what is out there now. The fact of the matter is, is that you're coming in later in the game and not first one in. And anytime there is an additional use, really on any property, whether it's conventional zoning or unconventional zoning such as a PD, we always reserve the right to require a traffic impact study if we think that there are going to be impacts to the, to the area that either create or exacerbate traffic patterns, concerns, impacts, whatever, of existing development. If we follow, if we follow the logic that you gave us, then we would be, in essence, be treating every development that came in in a vacuum, as if it's an island, it's by itself, and it's only the, strictly just the traffic congestion that that development created without considering anything that's already there. And that's, that's why the concern, my concern is what it is.
I completely understand that. My only response to that is, given that we presented something that shows we're under 100, it is such a nominal amount of traffic that I would think that we would not have to be held to that standard. If we were over 100, I would agree with you that we're hitting a level that they're even well over 100, but even at 100, let's say, that we're having a real impact on your roads.
Right, but the 100 is an ODOT standard. ODOT's standards are based on state highway, you know, design standards that are many times much more robust than the local streets that we're dealing with here. That's why I asked, is this, is an ODOT, is this an ODOT-controlled area? There are, there are areas close to the TIF, namely on State Route 41, Main Street, right there at the interchange, where ODOT has a heck of a lot to say about what we do, how we do it, when we do it, when we can't do it. The TIF area is not one of them. So to use that standard as a measurement against whether or not we should do a traffic impact study in this area, particularly with the road design that's out there and in place and financed, I don't think you're comparing apples to apples.
Even though we're 40% below that standard?
Forty percent may be a magic number, may not be. I'm just saying a traffic impact study would tell us if it was or not. And we would have done our due diligence and, you know, if yours didn't show any impact, for example, the next development that came on, okay, now they are adding to the traffic impact and maybe it goes from a no impact to some, if not significant, impact. Each one's got to be taken stacked against the ones that are already there. And that's my concern.
Any other comments from the commissioners? Mr. Murphy, do you have any other comments? Thank you, sir. Okay, commission make recommendation to City Council. We can go ahead and re-table this matter. We can say yea or we can say nay. What does the commission want to do?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we table the matter until there's information on the, we talked about with the covenants and with the traffic impact study, until Stat gets response and gets it to us.
There's a motion to tables or second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Please call the roll, table.
Mr. Tidington?
Yes.
Cappers?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mrs. Mayhem?
Yes.
Mr. McGary?
Yes.
The motion is passed, this item is tabled.
Does Stat have anything else to come before the commission today?
Nothing further, thank you.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chair, I forgot the commission members.
Okay.
I did, I am compelled to report just as information that we did receive an expedited annexation petition on behalf of Harold E. Trader. This is a approximately 34 and a half acre, it's a combination of two parcels, but one of them's one acre and the other one's 33 and a half. It is northeast of, I think it's the northeast corner of Dewey's and Troyer Vanna Road. So it's just northeast of the Halifax development that's being, residential development. It is expedited, so we have 20 days to get everything in order. No actions required by the planning commission, but as is our usual practice, we wanted to report that and make sure everybody knew. When it is annexed, assuming that it goes through, it will come in. I'm not sure exactly what the zoning is, but it will be whatever county-designated zoning it has in place right now.
Okay, thank you for your report. Any other comments or matters that would be undertaken by commission members? Now I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Motion to adjourn, is there support for the motion?
Okay.
Okay, all who favor sitting probably saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?